Well, if everybody should grab a seat and we get this show on the road. I want to thank everybody for coming. My name is Nick Wobbs. I'm with the Independent. We have Tony Becerra here and Oscar Gutierrez. Running for District Three, not the District Three. And we're just gonna have a little conversation here tonight and just try to talk about the issues of the District. But really, I just want to start off with a few questions. So, the relay is very highly providing translation services and she-
Do you want me to announce that?
Yeah. Sure.
If anybody needs or wants translation into Spanish, please let me know. We have the headsets here. Si alguien necesita o quiere la traducción al español, por favor avíseme y acá tenemos los aparatos. Gracias.
And I want to thank Jerry Axence here for providing the sound. Jerry has been doing amazing work for, I don't know, fifty years now. Truly, in Egypt, I said, the whole community. And, you know, initially, I was well reluctant to do this because this is Fire Football Wednesday. And, you know, what's more important, you know, city council or fire football? And it was a tough one, but we're gonna do the city council. And one of the things that, you know, people get cynical about politics, and often for really good reasons. But in San Barbara, I don't know if we live in a big town, or a small city, or a little bit of both, but we live in a place where you really can move the needle. No matter, you know, how up against the wall you feel you are. You know, City Hall is not as impervious or as immovable as a lot of people like to think. You can't fight City Hall. I don't know if, you know, where everybody came from, but on the way down, if you came down Valeria Street, the chances are you went over what they call speed humps. And that was, they've been there a long time, and they will knock the fillings out of your teeth if you go too fast. That was a law fight by the neighbors. And it wasn't a bitter fight. It wasn't a knockdown, drag-out fight. But the fire chief and the fire department didn't like it at first because they said, oh, this is gonna interfere with first responders. And people say, yeah, but, you know what, we have so many crashes at the Valeria Street freeway. For a while, that was how neighbors would meet. It would be like a crash on Valeria Street. My next-door neighbor had like an emergency kit. He was already, he had the fires. It was, and it was like, oh, hey, how you doing? And you'd catch up, and that was our idea of neighborhood bonding. So now we don't talk to each other. So we have a street bump. We have apps that get on. But that was an example of, you know, government, you know, you can engage with your government and make it move and be responsive. And the reason we're here, we have these two activists, both of whom promised to be very responsive, both of whom are rooted in this community. And both of them, you know, live and breathe and smell the same air as other people in the district. And they kind of get it. They come down on different sides of things, but we can, we can make stuff happen. The last, I'll give you another example, and then I'll try to move on to the point.
Zach's walking.
Yeah, no, yeah. You know, there was a blind cabinet major named Bruce Munson. And I don't know if people in the room know Bruce Munson, all right? And the army's war engineers said, you know what, we need to bulldoze Mission Street and pave it over into Chalk Street. The county police inspector bought that out. You know, the city's house or the board of supervisors, they all said, it's blind cabinet major, ornery as all day out. He said, no, I live on Mission Street, and it's a beautiful living thing, and the city is a beautiful living street. And talk about being up against the wall. Everybody, oh, you're crazy. Oh, you know, you're blind because you drank too much. I mean, everything was thrown at him. He won. He won. So, you know, the point here is that, yeah, there's a lot of reasons to be cynical, but there is, there's a lot of reasons to have hope, and there's a lot of reasons to say, you know, if you get into it, you can make something happen. It may not be what you want, and that's why we're here today. So, the format is gonna be, there's no opening statements. Says, we've heard all those before. But that will be a closing statement, which is usually the opening statement. So, we're gonna start off with something about what's your favorite color of the town question? And really, I want the two of you to give a little story of how your families came to be in San Barbara. And what was the journey and the path that your family chose? And then, once you were here, you know, where did you go to school? What jobs have you had? What kind of things have you done? Before you got to the point where you go, aha, I'm gonna be involved in politics. So, Tony Becerra, why don't you go first? Oh, you did great. You did great.
So, my parents are from, you guys heard Chapala Street. My parents are from Chapala, Jalisco, which is in Mexico. And so, being from Chapala, you know, they were, they were in the agriculture industry back then. And so, my dad came over during the war, and he was one of the braceros. And so, with that stuff, they lived in the Imperial Valley for many years. My family, I'm the youngest at twelve, so it's two generations. You have the older group of the family. I have nephews and nieces that are my age. Some are older, so it's kind of an awkward thing, but, so it just, growing up that way, it was a split family. All the kids, at the beginning, all Spanish only, but they also were laborers. They picked the cotton and they did the alfalfa out in the Imperial Valley. And in somewhere in the sixties, my dad came over to San Barbara, as my uncle invited him over. He got a job with the Sunkist back with the Galita Lemon Association out in Galita. And so, he worked his way up there, and he became the foreman for Galita, um, Galita, um, the Galita Association. And so, he met a lot of families, you know, and he, he always was willing to help out families and try to get them settled as they were coming in because it was a huge agriculture area. There was a lot of oranges, avocados, and lemons. Matter of fact, if I didn't want to go to school, he would pick me up and take me picking, you know? The problem is, I like to work, so I would challenge myself to see if I could pick as fast as the guys, you know? So, he's like, well, you're gonna end up with this type of job when you grow up if you don't go to school. And I'm like, okay. So, you know, challenges are always important. So, for me, growing up like that was great. I went to McKinley School. They closed it after I graduated. You know, that was because of me, but it could have been. I was, you know, I was definitely a handful, but, so I went to McKinley, went to La Cumbre Junior High, growing up on the west side here, you know, just with all my friends who were from the west side. And one thing I think people don't really realize with the west side is, back then, if you went to McKinley, if you went to Washington, you went to Monroe, you didn't really know each other. I was, I was a band geek. I played the trumpet, so I was, I got to travel and see all the different schools because I was a good trumpet player. They taught me, who knows? But anyhow, I was on the band, and so, when we got to junior high, all those kids got to meet each other. We got to hang out. And we had a unifying voice, which was we were all dancers, right? Oh, eleven o'clock? Oh, geez, okay. Well, you said the whole story.
See, I didn't warn you. Why don't you go take another, you know, two minutes? And then, Oscar, you have four minutes.
Okay, let's do that.
And then, after that, we'll skip to the two minutes.
So, let's move it forward, all right? So, I started coaching when I was twenty years old at Santa Barbara High. Matter of fact, there's the Cruzes here. He was one of my original wrestlers at Santa Barbara High, and he was also one of my green wrestlers at the dojo as well. And I'm so glad to see I got two former students running for city council. That's, for me, is like, it's just a proud moment. But that's, my life has always been leadership. My life has always been, you know, mentorship. My families were involved with the development of La Casa de la Raza. My brothers, my sisters were there all the time. I was there all the time because they couldn't go anywhere without me. So, I grew up in that type of neighborhood, that kind of nature within the family, and it's just been ongoing. I felt like there was a call of that, call to action a couple of months ago. Kind of had to weigh it out. For me, family's so important. I have a beautiful wife and three great kids, and I want to make sure everything was okay with them because I'm a busy guy. I'm always, you know, if you don't know, I run the martial arts school over here on San Andres Street. Been there for twenty-eight years. So, it's something that, you know, I'm always involved with kids, with the community. And so, I figured that this would be a good opportunity for me to move forward and kind of move the west side forward, get, take care of things that needed, that had been basically ignored for a while, put money into the infrastructure of the west side, which just hasn't happened. I just want to be the voice of our, of our community to see big changes, you know, and even the little changes, you know? Better lighting, better sidewalks, the basic stuff that we expect to be happening isn't happening. So, that was my call. You know, enough kids, you know, are trying to play, they're frauder when they try to cross the street. You know, it's like, are they gonna make it or not? I worry every day when they leave the building. So, I want to make sure that we have a safer neighborhood, and that's, you know, as a city, that's our calling card. You know, our job as a city is to protect the public, right? And so, we have to put the public first, and then we go from there. Then everything else is secondary. So, you know, public safety first, then we move from that point on. So, that's what my focus was, to get involved, and I'm willing to work as hard as I can to make it happen. So, hopefully, with my leadership, we can, we can do that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sensei. I'm city council member Oscar Gutierrez, born and raised on the west side. Still live in the same house that I'm in right now with my mom. I'm lucky enough to be able to live with my mom as her caretaker. She's, she's a retired disabled elderly person now. And I owe everything I have to my parents because if it wasn't for their struggle of immigrating to San Barbara in the sixties, they didn't, they didn't move together. They met here. They actually met at La Casa de la Raza. Back then, it wasn't known as that. It was known as something else before it was officially known as that. And my dad was from a small town in Jalisco as well, called San Juan de los Larios. And my mom was from an even smaller town called Hakona in the state of Michoacan. And they met here. My dad got here with a work visa to work the fields out in Galita. And my mom came here just to basically escape this terrible town that they lived in at the time with all her ten siblings. She was the oldest, so she had to take care of all of them. And they met here, and they had this funny little anecdotal story about how even with protests happening in Nala Vista, people being shot, the beaches were covered in oil. They looked around, they looked at each other, and they said, yeah, this is where we're gonna raise our family. You know, just, just to show you how special San Barbara was, like, even with all of that going on, they said, this is where it's gonna be. And they raised us with that kind of mindset that this is home, you know, this is what we want. And because of their hard work, they were able to purchase a lot of properties. Actually, I shouldn't say a lot of properties, a few properties around town. And I am now helping my mom manage those properties and be able to allow other people the opportunity that they had to be able to start a family and a life here in San Barbara. And I got my, I'm the youngest of four. Went to Harding School, La Cumbre Junior High, San Marcos High School, City College, and graduated from UCSB with a film degree. I was really into film and media because I was really obsessed, even as a young kid. My mom, it weirded her out that I liked to watch cartoon, or I liked to watch the news instead of cartoons. But it was because I just wanted to know what was going on in the world, and then I'll go to school and tell all my friends like this, and this was happening around the world. So, as I got older, I wanted to do that for my community. So, I was doing that in English and in Spanish for the local television station. I was the senior producer. And that's what got me into politics, was I realized I wanted to do more than just broadcast what was going on in the community. I actually wanted to be the change, as being somebody that was born and raised here. And I'd been able to do a lot of change in the last six years. I'll just read off a couple. I pushed to remodel Bonnet Park, added more trees to the west side, got the bike lanes built on Gillespie and Modoc to make sure kids got to school safely. Upgraded the streetlights from the old bulbs to brighter, more energy-efficient LEDs. And I know some of you complained about that. I'm sorry that they were too bright. A lot of people were kind of complaining that they were too bright. Opened, got, worked with the school district to open Harding School and La Cumbre Junior High after school hours so the community had open play areas to just have fun like we did when we were kids. And supported the remodel of the Correo and San Andres infrastructure, or intersection. So, there's been a lot of upgrades to the west side in the six years that I've been on council to make the, the infrastructure of the city, of the west side specifically, more safe for the community. And I'm willing to do that more for the next four years. And I've only got a few minutes left, but I've got way more to tell. If you want, you can reach out to me. All my contact information will be on this flyer that I passed out to you.
Well, thank, thank you so much. You raised an interesting question there. You were talking about the Gillespie Street. I already heard, Bike Boulevard. And we also have the Mission Street Barbs. And I'm, you know, I ride my bikes everywhere, and I'm, I have sort of mixed feelings. And I'm wondering, you know, what your thoughts are in terms of the effects of that Gillespie Street improvement? You know, is it build it and they will come, or is it just good intentions with a lot of money chasing after it without any results? How, how do each of you assess the impacts of that Bike Boulevard? I think it's been about a year, a little bit more than a year now. Oscar, why don't you go first and then tell you the follow-up?
Well, yeah, we gotta keep in mind that the reason that these were built was because the city adopted this program called Vision Zero, meaning that we wanna have zero fatalities due to pedestrian deaths by automobiles or what have you by 2030. So, in order to achieve that, we have to implement certain upgrades to our infrastructure to avoid that. So, obviously, having protected crosswalks and bike lanes are going to help do that. So, just remember, as inconvenient as they are, yeah, sometimes I'm just like, I want to get somewhere, and I don't want to be diverted or go over speed bumps. They're there to save kids' lives. I mean, that's ultimately why they're there. So, keep that in mind. So, right now, I mean, I, I ride my bike too. I rode my bike here to this meeting. I, I, I take that route whenever I go on my bike because I know it's safer. And I've helped kids ride their bikes to La Cumbre Junior High and Harding School on that bike. Not to mention, also, on the east side, on the bike lanes on the east side, I've done it as well. So, I mean, I, I know that it doesn't seem like they're being used, but they are. I've, I've used them myself, and I know several people there use them.
Are there any towns that we, because I, I don't see a lot of people on myself, and maybe I'm missing them. I'm wondering, does the city have towns?
I can definitely give you that information. I'll talk to Public Works and see if they've got the data on that. But I also know that the majority of the neighbors on that street enjoy that the cars aren't speeding down that street anymore.
Okay. Tony, what do you say?
Well, it's a mixed bag of law. A lot of people say they're just, they're just wasted money, you know, sitting there. I mean, I understand kids are so important, but, I mean, there's a lot of other cheaper ways to test the theory. I think I walk my dogs to the neighborhood almost every day, and you're right, I don't see nobody on those, very rarely. When I come down Modoc after I told my kids off at school, you know, there's that nice path they built there, and all the bikes are on the road, and a few people maybe might be walking, but they're not even used there. The kids are on their e-bikes on the main road. So, I mean, I get the intent, but I just, I think, you know, we should have a priority list of how we spend our money. I think, you know, from a business side, a point of view, you know, I would love to have, you know, a hanging bag system with nice metal rods going across the road atop, you know, and move them when I need them. But, you know, realistically, it's not people, not many people are gonna use them. So, I just need to be able to use with what we, work with what I have and kind of make it, make it work for us, you know? So, I think, just like, kind of with State Street, I don't want to get into State Street right now, but, you know, we can't spend a lot of money trying to figure out what, just if we just open it up and kind of see how that works and kind of work on a, you know, a multiple-view perspective to kind of help things work. So, talking to the biking community, talking to people who, you know, who, those kids do what they want to do. In the morning, if you're going down San Andres, there's bikes, e-bikes flying through, people, kids running across the street. It's like a playground on San Andres Street, you know? So, the thing is, is we just, I think money could have been used better, maybe, a little more shot of study to kind of find out what's going on. But I just think, glad kids are safer. I just hope we can do a program that maybe can get them to use the bike path, you know? I don't know.
Okay.
Thank you.
You know, just to step back a little bit.
Okay, I say one more thing?
Yeah.
You know, I talked to some of the, some of our first responders, and it's really, it's, it really messes them up too because they're trying to cross, you know? And then you see some of the traffic, and I talk about unsafe, the island's there, and they still make the left-hand turn. They still make the right, and they make a U-turn and get through. So, people will find a way to get around that stuff. And I just think, you know, if it slows down our first responders, you know, then now we're talking about issues with, you know, yeah, we're saving our life here, we might be losing one over here. Just kind of things we gotta think about before we act.
Exactly. I'd like you guys to look at the range from the thirty thousand foot and give us a sense of what you think the stakes are. I mean, aside from your own sort of personal lives and how it would affect your family and your friends, what difference does it make who gets elected this time around in District Three? And what are the, what are the big picture issues that, that council is gonna have to deal with? Where the differences between you two matters? And Tony, why don't you go first this time?
Okay.
What are the stakes in this election?
What are the stakes?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I think it seems to be definitely, affordable housing is definitely top, top concern. People are worried about, about the rents going up and how to control that. And I know the phrase, they like use rent control and stuff, but, you know, so I think that's a big topic. I think another big topic is gonna be, to me, would be public safety. We've always got to think public safety first, like I said before. And that should be at the top of the, top of the bracket. When we talked before, they were talking about, you know, possibly having a defund of if we don't add this new tax. You know, I don't even say that's possible. We should always have our first responders, you know? How many fires do we have to have in the hills? How many mudslides? How many floodings do we have to have before we finally say, you know, look, we need to make sure those guys are funded first? It's kind of like when you pay your rent, right? You pay your rent first, and then you decide, okay, how much money is left for me to go and spend, right? Well, same thing, you know, we gotta take care of them first. If we don't take care of them first, we're, we're in the wrong direction. So, so that's a big topic. I think, of course, locally for the west side is, you know, is better, just better putting some money into the infrastructure, you know? We're talking about better paving, you know, or some paving. I haven't seen paving, you know, other than the hatch holes. But, you know, we need to, you know, do repave, you know, support the businesses on the west side. You know, it's, it's tough, you know? During COVID, it was super tough for us, you know? But, but we made it through, and so we, I need to, we need to get the city behind that part of it too. And then, of course, overall, I think what we missed was the kids that were, that were basically handicapped during, during COVID. They didn't get a chance to, to really get the education they needed to move forward. You know, you're talking about sophomores, seniors, whether you showed up to, to class or not, whether you had an A or got an F, they passed those kids. Those kids aren't going to senior college now. They're not going, they're not applying universities. They don't feel like they have the confidence or the skills to move forward. So, we need to try to, as a community, figure out a way to, to implement something that's gonna give them what they need to be successful in town. So, okay, so, you know, focusing upon our youth and our young adults and getting them so they eventually have a chance to be part of our community and be able to stay here because they can find the type of jobs that can pay them what they need. So, that's something, that would be something I'd be focusing on. Thank you.
How about you, Axel?
Yeah, housing, definitely. We're, we're losing our neighborhoods. It's not like it was when I was a kid, where you just saw kids running around. That's why it was a big deal for me to work with the school district to open up the campuses because at any given point when I was growing up, you would drive by the school, and there would be kids there twenty-four seven. And I was lucky enough to do, to livestream the memorial for Randall Cunningham at San Barbara High. And his family and his friends consistently would say how they lived at the school. That that's where they hung out, and we got this legendary athlete out of that. Like, that was back when there were no gates around our schools. And it was, it was like a mecca for the youth to be able to grow. And I get that the schools locked them down as a secure, you know, safety measure, but we kind of robbed them of that access to open spaces. So, I fought really hard to get them to open it up, and right now, it's a pilot program for the west side. But if reelected, I want to do that for the entire city so that we can give that opportunity to our youth to make this feel like a neighborhood again. So, like, housing, as I said, I, I helped support the Housing Trust Fund that's collecting money to build affordable housing throughout the city. I voted to stop building new hotels around the city because we don't need new hotels. We need more housing. I also stopped the use of short-term vacation rentals in our neighborhoods so that we also don't need our houses that used to house families to be, you know, bachelor or bachelorette parties on the weekends, you know? We need families living there. The first responders, PD Fire, consistently, ever since I've been in, in office, we've agreed to give them pay raises. Never once has it ever been discussed to defund the police, so I don't know where that's coming from. That's just categorically inaccurate. And then, even during the summer, during the pandemic, council member Friedman and I found money to be able to do an after-school program where we had the kids at La Cumbre Junior High in the parks around the city have a safe place to be at their school so that they can get out and have fun with their friends. So, that's what I've been doing, and I'll continue doing that.
You had both brought up housing, the eight thousand pounds of real under the subject here is obviously rent control, rent stabilization. You know, Axel, you're in an interesting situation where you live at home with your mom, who is a landlord. And she is what they call a mom and pop landlord, and she is very much against rent control. And you are very much for it. And I'm wondering, you know, there's a lot of concern about mom and pop landlords versus the big, you know, hedge fund, bash investment companies. And I'm wondering, you know, why you are so certain that your mom is wrong? And what you could tell her to say, no, mom, you're missing the big picture here?
I'm not gonna publicly say my mom is wrong. Bad. I'm not gonna come home if that, if that, I just don't agree with her.
Okay, that's a better way to argue.
I, I, again, as a public servant who's been elected by the people to represent them, overwhelmingly, the people have been saying that this is an issue they want me to fight for them on. So, I'm fighting for them to get a rent cap of two percent, but I'm willing to meet somewhere in the middle between two and ten because right now, the state says ten. But I, I'm not like dead set on two. If, if we can get it somewhere between two and ten, I'm willing to do that.
Okay. We'll come back to that in a second. But Tony, in, you know, the previous forum I saw, you were very articulate about, you know, that rent's only up from twenty-five hundred to sixty-five hundred not being acceptable. But what I missed in that one was what protections you would support to prevent that from happening? I, I thought that you did not support rent control. But if you don't support rent control, what other measures would you support to keep rents from going up at that level?
Well, first of all, to start with, back to rent control. There's really, I've, I've been doing a lot of research since our last talk. I couldn't find one city where the rent control worked. You couldn't, you couldn't say, okay, well, we have this implemented, and it worked, and it's keeping everything down. It might do something in the short term, like maybe a year or so, but then eventually it starts to slow up. Think about it. If you're going at ten percent, which the state right now has, it's five percent, right? Five percent plus the, you know, the rate of inflation, so right now, like eight something. But, and that's coming down. Hopefully, it cuts down more, so that'll help us out, first of all. But second of all, is, is as, we have, we already have something that's in place. He's taking, talking between two and ten. We're, we're there. That's where we're at. But what we do is when we, when we start to add things that haven't been proven, again, putting the cart before the horse, then we get, we dig ourselves into a deeper hole because problems aren't being solved. Do I have all the answers for that? I don't, but I just know that, you know, when a socialist country like Argentina, which is, you know, under a lot of control, when they try rent control and it doesn't work, and they get rid of it, and all of a sudden, there's an opening, an open market, and they have an excess of properties that are available, then you gotta think, okay, maybe if it's not working there, maybe it's not gonna work here in an open market, in a, in a free society. So, I think that we did really need to look at it, what's, what's the, what's the, um, the fear tactics that are being used for this, you know, what's just hearsay on it, and what's the factual part of it? And from what I look, what I'm seeing, I don't see the factual part that, that says that it's gonna work. So, is there, are there things that we can do? Yes, I think instead of blanket, giving a blanket discount to everybody, which, you know, if you live next to a doctor, maybe he doesn't need it, right? But if we can get to a voucher- But if we can get to a voucher system, where we're hitting the families that need it, the single moms, we're hitting the, you know, the 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 families that have two or three kids and they're making, they're working as much as they can, but no one's babysitting. So we need to help the kids, the families that are in most need, and I think if we have the voucher, some type of voucher system, that's what we can do. That would be a combination between, you know, between the community and and also uh uh um the the city and maybe some private sector.
Yeah, I mean, with the voucher, um, you mentioned the city, I think has an eight million dollars deficit, and you're worried about, you know, public safety, not having enough money. I'm not sure where the city can come up with the money for the voucher and then try to administer that. That seems almost more administratively difficult than the rent boards and the uh in inspections of, you know, the the registry.
Well, the thing, well, the thing about the registry is Santa Monica, uh, they have a registry. It costs them four million dollars a year just to check the registry. You tell me that we couldn't use that four thousand dollar, four million dollars in a better, in a better way? You know, it's wasted money on something. So if you're a mom and pop, if you own a house, let's say you have a a studio on the back or you have a duplex, now you're gonna be under rent control. That means you're gonna have to log in who's coming in. If your, if your son or daughter moves out to go to college and you decide to rent the room, guess what? You're under rent control. So, I mean, talk about, you know, privacy issues, you know, a cousin comes to town for a little bit, you know, and you you now you have to register because they're staying with you for the summer. I mean, it's a lot of, you know, a lot of stepping on people, you know, and I I I, you know, I think less government, a little bit better than, but I think we also need to protect our citizens, and that starts by, you know, leaving more options, not giving a cap that hasn't been proven to work anywhere.
Ashley, you you've heard this a lot, and uh Peter Rupert from UCFB, he often says, you know, the only thing worse than an atom bomb is rent control. And it's a nice line, but I I'm wondering if you have drilled down in at any California city where they've done it, where you've seen an effective model that just proves what Tony just said. And and it sort of makes a distinction between the mom and pops and they and and the bigger uh investors. Is there anything you can say to say this, it's not just this atom bomb that we always hear about?
Yeah, I mean, first of all, it's not gonna affect any new housing. It can't because of Prop thirteen.
But thirty-three, which is on the ballot, look at how that's happening.
If it if it passes, so are we talking about currently or are we talking about hypotheticals?
It's probably a bit more than hypothetical at this point, but anyway, keep going, I'm sorry.
So right now, as it stands, it will not affect new housing because of the Costa Hawkins Act. Uh, and it won't affect any unit, any housing that's four or less units. So we're mainly talking like apartment buildings. We're not talking about homes, you know, like single-family homes. So there's a misconception.
Okay.
There's a complete misconception about who this is gonna affect. And and you wanna list cities that um it, that they've implemented it, where it's working? Alameda, Baldwin Park, Beverly Hills, Berkeley, Culver City, East Palo Alto, Haywood, Inglewood, Los Gatos, Mountain View, Oakland, Oxnard, Palm Springs, Pasadena, Richmond, San Jose, San Diego.
For a second. Is there any, is there any of those that you've actually, like, talked to people there and said, hey, this is a problem, because when the city's household, let's say you have four votes, and you can, you can pass a racing show for this. Hopefully you have learned from the the losers out there that were, it just was poorly written, and maybe there's, which cities have a good model and which cities don't?
Beverly Hills has a good model, and I think people can argue.
What makes sense for it?
Uh, well, they've they've been able to have, you know, a rent um registry and board that can effectively manage the situation, and I feel like we can implement that here as well. We just have to make sure that, you know, we listen to everybody when we start to plan it out, and we have been with the uh Housing Crisis Ad hoc Committee that uh we formed, we've been listening to everybody, meeting with all the stakeholders, you know, property owners, landlords, and getting their input and uh and seeing where we can negotiate and come to an understanding. And we're gonna have a public meeting at the Public Library on uh September thirtieth. So if, oh, sorry, no, actually, we had to reschedule it. It's gonna be in October. I'll 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 find a date and remind everybody. So that way the public can voice their opinions about what we can do to address the housing crisis.
Now, there is a measure on the ballot that would uh allow rent control to apply to newly built uh units. Um, I I understand you that you support that, is that correct?
Sorry, repeat that?
They, there's a measure on the ballot, a statewide ballot, to allow rent control to apply to new units, not just the ones that are fifteen years older and older. You support that, right?
Uh, yeah, I've been, I've been saying it because we have to be able to do things to get the things we've never had. We're gonna have to be able to do things, the things that we've never done. So right now, we haven't really done much to try to move the needle, the needle on the affordable housing and and having people stay secure. So I feel like obviously these ballot measures are coming up out of necessis- out of necessity, not out of convenience.
Quick, can I say something real quick? Um, so I mean, we, so we voted as a state with Prop ten and Prop twenty-one, and both times those got turned down. So that's that's the state, all of us have voted to say, no, we don't want it. Um, Governor Newsom, who actually was the one who got twenty-one passed, he says no additional rent control needs to be done. He says that, you know, it could be a a disservice to different communities, it would be, um, uh, he doesn't know the consequences. It's un- 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 what do you say, un- um, unintended consequences of having something added on, you know, including uh having people not wanna build, you know, when you, when you drop it down to two percent, put a cap, these these people aren't gonna come in and just build new housing. They're not gonna spend the money, invest the money if they're not gonna get it back anytime soon. Yes, the housing keeps going up, that's, you know, my parents bought their house in the Mesa for fourteen thousand dollars, can you do that? You know, and so it's like, you know, that, then we're gonna happen again in Santa Barbara, you know, but the thing is, is that we gotta look, if, right now we have an assembly that's that's uh a de- um, a majority of Democrats. That means if they wanted to pass a a rent control, an additional rent control law, that what they thought was gonna be more effective, and I'm sure they're smarter than I am, I think they would have done it by now. But they say, no, you know, it's not gonna happen right now. And so I think as a community, we need to figure out other aspects and other ways to get people into equity positions where they get a chance to buy places. Using, you know, having cheers with uh maybe some condos, like my friend who makes twenty-five thousand dollars a year, who's behind Costco, and he has a condo. I don't have a condo, but he got in, you know, I didn't apply, but you know, he got in. So the thing is, when you have more opportunities to have some skin in the game because you're part of the community, you're you you have something to call your own, that's where I wanna see, we can work towards that rather than, you know, uh, you know, taking away the the ability for people to have privacy with, you know, with their with their own ADUs and their own um places at home.
I guess I'd just like to push you a little bit more. I mean, I I think that the reason rent control is gaining more momentum is just because of the action I was paying so many people are feeling. You yourself have been invested, you know what that's like. Um, and those stories, you just hear all the time now, and uh I I hate your 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 concerns about rent control, but what I am not seeing from, or hearing from you or from the the owners uh of rental properties is as creative here, just how how do we meet in the middle? You talk about we we need to find a meet in the middle spot. I'm not seeing it, I'm not hearing it. And I'm wondering if you could, if there's something else that you have, uh, you might be able to point to.
As far as housing goes?
Yeah, as far as how can they get some sort of relief from the sort of rent increases they've been seeing? Because if they, if they don't feel that there is a real, we don't have any skin in the game, and we don't have anything to lose, and you should talk about your atom bombs, but I don't share it 'cause I'm getting invested now.
Well, so so, I mean, I think about that atom bomb again, so we have the rent, we gotta hit rent control, right? And then you add a new tax, right? That's, is that gonna hurt anybody? Heck, yeah, you know, so you have a new, they wanna implement a new tax, and then we wanna restrict uh the owners of the properties, right, so and two percent. How much does your insurance go up every year, right? You know, some people are getting policies, they're getting the policies canceled, right? You know, when you hear get the policy, you know, they, you get these threats. So you talk about real-life increases that you are unavoidable, you put two percent, what's what's gonna happen? When they implemented, I don't hate to go back to Argentina, 'cause I, but I do, it's fresh in my mind. Uh, when they implemented rent control, forty-five percent of the properties were sold. And then another big portion went and started doing Airbnb, so they could get around that stuff, you know? And now all of a sudden, there's a, you know, they get rid of it, now there's uh enough available space. So I'm saying is that uh, that we can't keep digging our, digging a hole, you know? If we add a a a tax, you know, another half a cent for possibly what they say it's gonna be, I mean, first they gotta dig themselves out of a hole, right? And then now they're gonna take the extra and it's supposed to go for this or for that, but you know, there's no guarantee with that. There's, it's not earmarked for anything, and I I hate to see, you know, politics as normal, you know? Promise the world, you know, and and then hold the prize. I mean, we can't run it that way.
Let me just follow up on that and, so you you're saying you don't support this half-cent sales tax that the city is asking for? But you've also said, explained how, you know, public safety has to be first priority, and you talked about all the kids who got, you know, screwed out of three years of education and they lost the city. It, without this, the city has an eight million dollar deficit, and I don't know how the city hall is supposed to keep everything going, giving the first, you know, the first responders a priority, and the kids are gonna be taken care of and all this other stuff. So I'm not sure why you don't support the um tax increase.
Because it comes down to fiscal responsibility. As a businessman, you have a budget and you have to stick to it. You know, and the city needs to be run that way. You gotta be able to say, okay, here's what I have to work with and I can stay within my means. You can't make up these new things and hope that, you know, oh, it somehow didn't cover it, but let's put it on the art of the the next generation. We can't do it that way, you know, we used to have, we used to have a surplus, how many years back? You know, and now we're digging ourselves out of a hole, you know, so I was just saying, if you ran it and more like a business, you know, like it's supposed to be, you know, if we had more accountability, and then we focus on, you know, having a, you know, prior prior ti- prior prioritization list, then we can work down the list and check it off, and then you'll see that everything's gonna work out. And then these little, you know, frivolous, you know, uh, someone told me that, you know, the contractor for the bike lane made fifteen million dollars.
That was that was state money, I don't know. It's still money.
So so money's still money, you know, so money's money, so the thing is, could that state money been diverted to something else for a project in Santa Barbara? Like this, how about open the plunge at the beach, you know, I mean, I don't know. I grew up there, that was an awesome place to be, it's been, it's been closed for about seven years, you know, so.
Ashley, you want to jump in on why you see it differently?
Yeah, so if any of you want me to explain how government works, uh, I'm totally willing to do that 'cause there's this fundamental misunderstanding here. Uh, yeah, some of that funding is specifically for projects like that. We can't just get the funding and be like, oh, just kidding, we're not gonna use it for that. They're gonna take it away and then we have nothing. So the funding for projects like that came specifically for that and only that. We can't just like wishy-wash it like that, no, we'll, it will get into major trouble. And it is fiscally impo- uh, it's fiscally responsible to realize that you need to make better investments, and that's what a tax is, it's an investment. You're, the, I don't know if people understand what investments are anymore, but the intention is that you put money away for something to generate later. So a lot of people think like, oh, this is gonna be something that you can just take away, that you can take advantage of right now. No, that's not how it works. And if you look at the way, we just got a new fu- we got a new police chief, right? We uh, we we uh put out a a uh, an opening for a new police chief at the rate that the previous one was getting paid, we got no applicants, no applicants. So what did we have to do? We had to increase the 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 salary of the police chief, then we got one, and we got a great one. So that's how it works, that's how the world works now. It's not just like, you know, yeah, everything's going up in price, so we have to be able to address that. And this is an investment for the community. This is gonna go to our first responders to make sure that we can be competitive and have the best and keep the ones that we have now that are doing well. So if we don't do this, then we're gonna miss out on a massive opportunity because if we don't take advantage of this tax ourselves as a city, the county and the state will pass a tax, and we won't get all that money from it. We're gonna have to split it with the county or the state. So if we don't do it now, we're gonna lose out on the majority of the profit this tax will will generate.
This hits to something um really funny. Electors bikes, the basic, I can't go anywhere without people bringing up e-bikes and what a menace they are to civilization. Um, and, you know, I'm wondering, either one of you uh actually ride e-bikes? What you, what is your sense of what a menace they are and what is, what's your sense of what an opportunity they are? And lastly, um, what can the city do to make people feel more secure where e-bikes are concerned? Why don't you go first, Ashley?
So I'm a e-bike rider. I I love my e-bike, I love riding e-bikes. You all need to understand and accept that this technology is going nowhere. It's only gonna become more accessible, more affordable, you're gonna see it in everything. So there's a lot of like cultural shock happening right now with how new this technology is and how the overall public are reacting to it. And yeah, it's growing pains. We're gonna have to take time to learn how to navigate with it.
Let me, let me jump in. I mean, I I I had a question about you, I think there's rate, but I also think there's a reason why people are freaked out, and I am wondering why the city hasn't taken a more aggressive response to to dealing with people zipping around thirty miles an hour, however fast they're going. You know, the council, why haven't we seen more of a response?
So we've asked the police chief if we could have more enforcement. They said that as of right now, it's, it's something that they're finding to be challenging because the technology they have to track how fast they're going isn't there yet. Like, the the technology they have is set for vehicles, not for bicycles. So it's hard to be able to like find somebody a ticket for going too fast on an e-bike when the technology isn't there. But I, even as of last night at our council meeting, I specifically told the PD that I want them to enforce uh on the e-bike riders because they're making me look bad. And I don't appreciate that because I'm fighting for them, but I'm fighting for them to be responsible and courteous. So I'm willing to support it.
Licenses?
I I I've said it before, I'm willing to um uh bring a ordinance forward to the council saying that you have to be sixteen and o- over to have an e-bike. I'm definitely willing to do that for sure.
Okay, Tony, what do you say?
Well, I think the biggest problem isn't the sixteen-year-olds, the thirteen-year-olds. My daughter was a thirteen-year-old, twelve-year-old on an e-bike, uh, you know, she used to be on a computer or a cellphone in her room all the time, you know, staying away from parents. And we got her an e-bike, next thing you know, she was out in ballot, you know, she learned the, the, city like I did, you know? We were kids, and we used to ride off to Winchester Canyon to carpenteria, we were all over on our bikes, you know, so um, I saw her confidence change when she got on the e-bike. Now, of course, I was, she was part of that first group of gang bike kids that were going, you know, from the Mesa down to the downtown area and and Upstate Street when it was closed and stuff, but uh, um, but, you know, being a parent, we had to tell her she had to be responsible, she had to slow down, you know, she had a lot of friends that were just irresponsible, so she stopped hanging out with them. So obviously, as parents, we need to be on our kids about it. Um, I think when you're talking about State Street, yes, I think there should be something done because all the locals that I talk to don't wanna go down there, you know, it's too dangerous. The kid parent, the kid parents take their their carts, you know, they're almost run over by these, by people on their e-bikes, and not just kids, right now, it's a lot of adults. Um, you know, you have the bike groups that go through there, and you just, it's a freeway for them. Um, so I think uh what we need to do is, is come up with a plan. I mean, the eye test should be good enough. You see a guy sweep, you know, going by, you don't need to say, oh, was that twenty-five or twenty-seven miles an hour? No, it's too fast, so we just need to, you know, do something to keep them within, you know, a reasonable uh, a a reasonable uh speed limit. But I think a presence, having a presence down there with our police, you know, with our police volunteers, you know, that's gonna make it, you know, um, an impact, and maybe a public announcements, you know, that'll might, that'll help out too. But, you know, um, it's been a problem for a while, and not, again, nothing's being done. We just need to, you know, challenge our our city council to to get something done, you know? And the thing is, is uh, you know, we can't just sit on our hands about it, but it's definitely some some issues involved there.
The last night, the city council had a a big forum by our session over the the future of State Street. And the vibe of the room was actually quite positive and uh, it was refreshing. And, you know, Ashley, you were very adamant, not one more inch, I think, was your quote uh about uh not one more inch of State Street being opened up for cars. And Tony, I not entirely say what your position is, but my impression was you wanted State Street opened up a lot more to cars. but my impression was you wanted State Street opened up a lot more to cars. And I'm, I'm wondering, A, what is your position? But really, what I've heard from people on both sides is that cars really don't make the difference. Whether they're there or not there in terms of is State Street a vital happening place? So I'm wondering, what is your magic wand solutions, A, both of you? For what we need to do to make State Street much more happening and alive than it had been with or without cars? Oscar, why don't you start with your place?
Uh, yeah, I mean, a- a- as I've said, this isn't just me talking, right? Like, as an elected representative, I was supposed to get the consensus of the people and bow in their favor. And I can tell you just hands down categorically, the majority of the businesses on State Street have told me that they like it closed because it's benefiting their business. And there's some people that are like, and I, I don't think this is right at all. They're, they're, they're calling them a mafia. You know, uh, State Street Business Mafia or what have you? And I think just, that's just disrespectful because these are local business owners. And their employees are locals who are struggling to live here. So if the business owners are saying, this is making it possible for me to keep my business, why would you be against that? And people complain like, oh, you know, the, there's nothing for me to do on downtown. You know, you either wanna support local businesses or you don't. I mean, I, I don't know how else to say it, you know? You just gotta have to show up and support your local businesses. Yeah, we can all make wishes that we wish we had this business here and wish we had that business here. But we gotta support the ones that we do have because they're, they're our neighbors. They're, they're our lo- local people whose kids are in our schools and they shop at our stores. So we gotta be able to support that. And if you don't believe me, come with me. I'll show you personally. Cause so many people, when I tell them, this is what the people want, they're like, no, that's not what I heard. Now I'm on my friends and I'm like, okay, well, come with me and I'll show you. And all of a sudden now I have to busy and I can't make it. But I'm challenging you, like, let me show you. So you just don't take my word for it. I'll, I'll give you a list of all the organizations that have spoken about it publicly. So that's all I gotta say about State Street. People love it and I love it and it's the change we need.
Tell me what you say.
Well, I mean, my daughter, whatever school projects was to walk down State Street and get a consensus of how the people felt about State Street and Santa Barbara in general. And it was about split, you know? And it seems to be the battle is at the bars and restaurants versus the retail. Um, accessibility is a big deal, you know? Um, so we're talking about the way State Street is set up right now, it, obviously it's not, it's not working, right? It's not working. It's, uh, if it were working, then everybody would be happy about this. We'd need discussion, right? But it's not working. So what we have to do, as we need to do as, as a city, you know, as we just need to compromise. We need to come together. We need to find out what, what works for, what works for one person and work for this person over here. We gotta make it work for each other. You know, you can't just do it one way, you know? I worked in the, in the bars for fifteen years down, down on State Street. And I saw a successful open State Street working and we shut it down during fiestas or different, different holidays and, and watched that happen and that thrive and open it back up for the taxi drivers and get back in and get the people in and out, you know? Um, recently I hurt injured my back. Um, and the thought of having to go down three flights of stairs and walk over to a business was just too much. And I, and I imagine what the hell for these are having to deal with trying to get to, get to a shop on State Street. So accessibility is kinda tough and maybe, you know, finding different avenues that way to, to kind of pop State Street. But, uh, I think it, it's gonna be a combination of things. We can't, we, we definitely can't do like the Lita. They just, they mandate to something, we're gonna shut it down. We're gonna put parking this way. We're gonna do it this way. And it should work and it didn't work, you know? Right? It didn't work. And so it could have been done, you know, a lot cheaper than what they dropped was a million dollars to do that, you know? You know, it could have tried a different way, but like temporary maybe. But, uh, the thing is, is that what we have to do as a community is come together and figure out what's gonna work. And we just try it, maybe open it up Monday during the work hours from, from early morning when deliveries are going on, you know? Um, I had a, let me just real quick, I had a, um, a student who, the dad was mad at me because his son learned how to ride his bike on State Street. He's all, you're gonna take that away? And I said, okay, let me just ask you, was it Monday afternoon? Was it a Thursday morning? No, it was on the Saturday. Okay. I'm okay with shutting it down on Saturday, but this, that business happened during the week. So the locals can get down there and do what they need to do to support small business.
Let me, let me try a different angle. You know, one of the stories that we've never really sat in the rounds of doing, but talk a lot about is, um, vacancies on State Street. And we all have wondered this, I think I'm a question, you know, where does this economist when you need one and they're never there? And it's, how is it that certain landlords can just leave their shops empty? And, um, how, how do they stay in business and why would they rather shit nothing than, um, something? And I've heard lots of theories about it, but, um, you know, tell me, your good friend Steve Paul is a very big and commercial real estate world. And, you know, I'm wondering if you have any likes to shed on why, um, certain landlords just say I'd rather be jars than in business? And what city hall should do about it in your estimation? Should they just say, well, it's a free market, it's his choice? Or should, should, I mean, there, there are people who've talked about, you know, uh, the vacancy tax? There's all kinds of different ideas, you know? I'm wondering what your thoughts are.
Well, I think, um, well, first of like on the four hundred block of State Street, you know, there's boarded up windows, you know, I'm sure, is that part of city code? I'm not sure if that is or not, but, you know, boarded up windows doesn't make sense to me, you know? So they're, at least make it look nice if you're not gonna take care of it or you're not gonna allow access to that. But, um, being that Steve is my friend, you know, the, the vacancy rate's been about the same. It's, it's, you know, goes up and goes down. So that's, you know, I was in the car with him when a, a person who owns a business on State Street for, uh, I think twenty-seven years, said, get me, get me the blank off of State Street. And, and, and he's, oh yeah, we'll, we'll talk on Monday. We'll talk on Monday. And what happens is, he's, no, no, I need it done by Monday. He's all, I, I, I have had this business for twenty-seven years. This is, I think it's twenty-seven, thirty years, whatever. Yeah, I've had it for this long. I wanna leave it to my daughter, but we can't make it on State Street. So this person is willing to pay three times the rent on Coast Village Road rather than stay on State Street, you know? How that makes sense, it doesn't make sense to me, you know? So it must be economically, you know, affecting them that much for him to be willing to do that. Um, so I just think that, um, from a, from that perspective, you know, I just kinda go like, okay, well, we need to do change. Something's happened that's different.
Okay. Oscar, what do you say? And, and, you know, does City Hall even have a handle on who's sort of the, the, uh, sort of time owners are? They just are sort of the Chinese vacancies. Do we know who they are? Have, have they been brought in and said, hey, who's what's going on? Do you have an issue? Is there something we need to deal with? Where do we know?
Yeah, internally we do. I don't know if we have that list publicly. But yeah, inspec- specifically on the four hundred block, where it used to be the old E-Sauce.
Right.
Uh, that property, those property, it used to be two brothers and we believe that they're dead now. And it's been, it's been vacant for like twenty years. So obviously, they were, twenty years ago, they were very much alive. They, they decided, it was a decision that they are like, we're not gonna do anything with this property.
What do you think City Hall should do? I mean, I guess if their property, they can do what they want, but at the same time, it does add to an element of bright. The four hundred block has a lot of bright vibes to it.
Right.
So what do you think they can do, or you can do, uh, to, to work with those owners?
So it's been proposed by some people that we should pass a vacancy tax. The only issue is that the studies that we've seen or the, the examples we've seen of vacancy taxes in the other cities around the country, is that the fine was low enough where they would just pay the fine and they would still keep it vacant. Um, so.
I mean, is this a big deal or is this just a sort of a, a minor ephemera and?
No, it is a big deal. I, 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 I find it as a source of pride that they're affecting my pride in my city. Because it, it just, it doesn't seem like, so local landlords, their properties are rented because they live here. But the ones that aren't, they're, they're not here. They're physically not here. So it's almost like an afterthought, like, oh, they don't really care, you know? So that, that bothers me and, and there's not much as a city we can do about that. But recently, you know, the downtown org and the chamber were really pushing for the better, uh, the business, um, improvement district, uh, plan. And, uh, it passed, so every business is gonna be paying into that so that they can maintain a higher standard of service for their business on State Street. So that also includes those property owners. So in a way, that kinda is like a pseudo, so, um, pseudo vacancy tax in a way. And, um, and yeah, I mean, uh, to, to go back to like, it doesn't make sense to you as to why that business owner wanted to leave and go to Coast Village? It sounds like we need to know what the business is. A, a lot of these business owners, it seems to me, I, I walk into their businesses and I look around and I say, there's nothing in here I wanna spend my money on. But why is that, right? Not every store is gonna be tailored for your liking, right? But you're gonna blame the government for that? I'm sorry, some of the businesses on State Street are specifically targeting a certain demographic and they're being very successful. And now there are others that aren't and they're not. So it doesn't take an economist to figure that one out, you know? You have to be, i- i- it's just basic capitalism. You're gonna spend your money where you wanna spend your money and you're not gonna spend it where you don't want it. And you're gonna go where you're gonna wanna spend your money. So if the stores in Coast Village Roads appeal to you, guess what? They're appealing to your demographic. You know, you're not gonna go to Ivy to go hang out, right? To go shopping, right? Who, who, who hears shopping Ivy in the last few? One, one, two people, two people. Yeah. So.
I need, I need my free bird, sorry.
Yeah, but I, I, you know, they're, they're, they're different demographics. So if we need to, if the city has to hire an economic advisor, we can do that.
Thank you very much, Adam.
Yeah, and again, there is, uh, in my opinion, internal conflict between the leadership at the time that didn't make that as, uh, effective as we would have liked. But I'm willing to look at it again, you know?
Well, going back to that owner of E-Saws, um, he owns a building on the corner of Van de Cap and Haley Street. Hadn't been rented in twenty years. And I figured out how to negotiate with that family and they rented me that location. Although it was a short time, I was, I opened up a nonprofit in twenty eleven. And, uh, they, they talked to him. It was a long process, took about, you know, four or five months of talking to the owners. And they finally leased it to me, um, so I could do, I was actually gonna do a donut shop on one side, you know, mad donuts. And then I was gonna do my nonprofit because it was right in the middle of downtown for both side to have, you know, kids from both sides of the community to meet together at, at a neutral place. But he wrote me a lease. So what I'm saying is that if we communicate with these landlords and we really reach out to them, it's possible. I'm, I'm nobody special. I just had a, a, a desire to do something, right?
So what happened here?
Well, what happened is, uh, when we got, finally got approved from the city plans, another four or five months later, um, my, one of my partners said, hey, uh, you either buy me out or buy you out. If you wanna buy me out at seventy thousand, if I buy you out, it's twenty-five thousand. So I just picked up and ran, you know, so it didn't work out. But, you know, but now it's being rented, right? It was a, it was a kayak rental place and now it's something else. So they're obviously renting out the property. It's just, nobody's maybe reached out to them about the property on State Street. So, um, if I'm elected, I promise I'll be on their doors, okay? Cause it, it took, like I said, I'm new to this game. Um, when I got into it, then I started opening my eyes, what's really going on? Cause you know, I'm working all the time, you know? If I'm not working, I'm, I'm working all the time. I mean, just that's what I do. I go from one volunteer group to another, then I, you know, do my business, then I have my family that I need to care for. So, you know, I'm doing the, the, I'm doing the, um, the daily grind that most people do. They're working, trying to pay the bills, do what they need to do. So I don't really have time to go and, and walk down the street and decide what's, what needs to be fixed or not. So, but now that I'm in, in that arena, now I'm starting to notice, wow, I can't believe it's down so bad. It's dilapidated at this point. So, um, now I'm gonna go down, so, you know, crosswalks that are saved. You know, um, there's a crosswalk in front of Cuckoo's. You can't turn into Cuckoo's anymore from the west side, you know? So now people are making these big loops. Now that little alleyway that used to be the apartments back there where their kids used to play, no longer can play there anymore because they have to worry about the main, the main fair that, that's alleyways turned into because of, you know, bad planning. Um, I, I love the light, don't like the island where you can't get through, you know? Um, so, uh, some of those, those are, the lighting is important, you know? The canopy, I talked about that before, the magnolia trees are beautiful, but the lighting is above the ca- the, the canopy, so it doesn't reach the ground. If you go to our business side, um, El Sarapa has lights in front of their building. Um, the bar has lights in front of the building. The pizzeria, they have now lights strung up in front of their place for better lighting. I have lights in front of my building. The, the new restaurant, um, Sason, they have lights on their patio now. Rosa just had her parking lot redone and she put lights everywhere to try to help with the lighting aspect. So it's obviously a concern for all of us. We just, you know, we're all busy as business owners down there. We don't have time to, to go down and, and do the fight that our representatives supposed to be doing for us.
Oscar, I'm gonna show this one to you, um.
Well, if I can respond to that, Sensei Becerra has had my cell phone number. Yeah, I mean, I walk by his business almost every other day. It, it, he has texted me about issues in the past and I've responded. I have, I have, as the kids say, all the receipts to back it up. Uh, even with private property matters, he asked me for help and, and I went and asked the city if they can help private property owners and unfortunately that's private property. We can't really start funding businesses to run their business essentially. So we appreciate that they're taking care of their businesses, but some of it's not the priority of the city to essentially help run their business, micromanage their business.
Do you, you said you walked down the dungeon, but did you not notice the lights, the sidewalks, the street?
Yeah.
That's my question. So.
Yeah, and as I said, I have the receipts to show you.
Okay, I know.
That, that I commented.
Okay, let's hold on. All right.
No, I, I can read you the schedule.
Yeah, we don't need that.
Everything, everything's planned out to be, what, what he's suggesting has already been paved by me to be done. So I got the fiscal years planned out for the maintenance of the west side, right here, from twenty twenty-five all the way to twenty twenty-eight. All the streets that are gonna be updated and maintained, all the sidewalks, all of that. So it's not like it hasn't been worked on. This isn't like ordering an Uber. It's not gonna get to your door in ten minutes or less. It's, it's gonna have to take time to plan out, to be able to get the funding, the staff, the materials. All that takes time. So I think that's, there's a misconception among the public that, you know, all of this is gonna happen immediately. It takes time. You all need to communicate, right? I'm the most responsive and accessible council member that we got. It's, communication's a two-way street, right? You gotta meet in the middle. So my community, my, my contacts are out there. I'm like, you know, there's, there's that saying, you can lead a person to water, but you can't make them drink. Drink me up. I'm here for you. Just tell me what you want and I'll fight for it.
Excuse me, that was my question. And it was specifically about the lower west side. Neither one of you have addressed that question. And those of us who live on the lower west side would appreciate your response.
So yeah, my, my response about which streets are gonna be maintained, it is addressing the lower west side.
Okay.
Yeah.
No, you didn't say anything about the lower west side.
Okay, so what's your biggest issue down there?
That was, I asked you for your plans on improvement. If you're, if you're supposed to be the council person for the district, which includes the lower west side, which is always, always eliminated from the talks, the conversations. I wanna know what you have done aside from putting all of your, uh, posters in the, and on the parkways, which is public, which they are not supposed to be. Aside from that, what have you done to check out the lower west side? Thank you.
Well, I, I go, I go through there quite a bit, actually. Um, looking at it, I mean, obviously the lighting is a big issue down there. So when I'm going through, when I decide to go through the, what needs to be done on the west side, obviously that's gonna be included. Um, you know, I, I, going through there at night, it's, it's tricky to drive through that, that area because it's so, so many blind corners. Um, I drove it through there and seen, uh, um, you know, cars parked in front of fire hydrants and stuff like that. So obviously, you know, there's gonna be needed more patrolling in the area to make sure that, that opens up the parking aspect. Cause I don't know how, how, I know the parking area on the upper west side is bad. I don't know what it's like down there. I'm assuming it's just as bad because there's a lot of apartment buildings on there as well, but, um, uh, but just off the top, I would say that safety aspect is important. I know the crossing the bridge was, was a big deal. Um, I have quite a few students that have lived in that area and they were concerned about crossing over the bridge. Um, what's that? Ortega Street Bridge? Is that what it is? So, yeah, so, um, yeah, there's a lot of things that need to be done. Um, but I think it starts with the streets, the sidewalks, the lighting, and then also patrolling to really help the, the neighborhood. I haven't heard any concerns from that area, so, but as soon as, of course, I'm ready to. I haven't heard any concerns from that area, so, but as soon as, of course, I'm ready to listen to, for any part of the west side area, including, you know, the DMV area, I didn't hear from anybody from the DMV to the lower State Street area. You know, of course, that, um, uh, but when I drive that through that area as well, and and some of the same issues.
We got a whole bunch of questions here and we don't have that much time, so let's pick up the pace a bit. Um, question for both of you has to do with illegal street vendors. Um, Oscar, I hear you've said to show on that one, you've tried, is it worth? Um, what is the hangup, you know, A, how big of a problem is it? And B, what can be done about it and why hasn't been done already?
Uh, I think it's a big problem, I I feel like the public, some of the public doesn't agree with it being a big problem. But ultimately, these are non-local vendors that are, that are taking our money and spending it somewhere else, they're not, they're not paying taxes on that money that go back to our community. And they're not being uh, uh, approved by the health department. So they're, they're selling unregulated.
So how?
Right, so like last year, when it, when it happened, I went individually and personally to each one of these vendors and asked them where they were from. They they consistently, they consistently said that they were from the Los Angeles area. And I was in communication with our fire department and police department to regulate on them. We had two community meetings, one on the east side, one on the west side, to speak with city staff and county public health officials to try to address it, and they went out and ultimately, they were able to find out essentially, who from the LA area was sending them to Santa Barbara. And we were able to issue a warrant out for their arrest. Now, once that happened, they stopped coming. But then, what ended up happening was they essentially found somebody to replace that person and they've come back. So now we have to start the process all over again, where we're trying to figure out, okay, who's essentially sending them up here? And then issue them a warrant for their arrest again, so that they could stop. Because what's, what's, what they're doing is that essentially, they're having undocumented people sell this, this food. And when we go to cite them, it's not like if one of us were to be cited, cause they can find out who we are, where we live, because we're residents, you know? They, they're not, so they basically get the citation and throw it away, and then the next day, there'll be somebody new who's also undocumented. So it's this, they they found this loophole in the state system, cause the state ultimately said, we cannot um, deny people's ability to street vend, but we can put certain regulations, like getting a permit. That's literally it, and I actually helped streamline the permitting process for street vending, so it's as easy as possible. So I kinda took it personally, that even I went out of my way to make it as easy for them as possible and they're still denying it. So, we're working on it, I'm talking to the police and fire to see if we can just straight up start confiscating all their equipment and see if that'll work. Uh, but there are loopholes, you know, and they're, they're exploiting each and every one of them, so uh, we're doing the best we can to address it right now, but I'm definitely willing to push it harder.
Tell me, what I hear?
Yeah, I don't like it either, you know, um, I've had a couple of people that have got sick from eating the food over there, you know, um, yeah. And I know there's some vendors, like, I don't know, Don Paco's over there on the corner, he's in the hardware store, but you know, he he supplies a service for all the workers, most restaurants shut down now at post-COVID, like nine o'clock, no one stays open till eleven anymore. Even Harry's, you know, which was a great place to go, right? And uh, so, um, but the thing is, is they provide a service for the workers, they're getting out of work at ten to eleven o'clock at night and they, they have food for them. So I get the ones that are permitted, everybody else, though, they need to be shut down and it's been a long time and it's a real he- health hazard. That, you know, they allow the, the, they're allowing propane tanks at a gas station, how is that possible? You know, that's just a bam away from a, what you could call it before, and that bomb going off, that's what's gonna happen over there. So, I think there, a- again, going back to public safety, we need to put that first, and if we do that, that absolutely shuts them down right away. And I don't know why that's not happening.
Okay, um, one last question, and what, what would you actually, we're gonna wrap it up, um, with closing remarks, so you guys have really, I think, explained a lot of the differences. Uh, which ain't like, so many similarities, but really a lot more differences. Um, wrap it up with a closing remarks and.
Yeah, as I said, I I've been the most responsive and accessible council member in our city's history and I wanna continue doing that. I uh, I wanna continue working for the west side by supporting the west, uh, the west side community center that UCSB is gonna build on this campus. Uh, also, the neighborhood clinics is gonna build a brand new state-of-the-art, three-story clinic across the street from Super Cucas, which is one of the reasons why that uh, traffic uh, crosswalk was built there. Uh, I also wanna be able to uh, help address the housing crisis. And I've, I've, I've already done that and continue to do that, to protect tenants' rights and also make sure that we've got enough affordable housing. And uh, ultimately, you know, I'm someone that you can, I'm consistent, you know? I know exactly what I believe in and and I'm, I believe in representing all of you. And uh, I show up to every meeting, I take every phone call, every email. I I know what I voted for when and I'm willing to continue fighting for you. Uh, you just gotta reach out to me, that's, that's the catch, right? So let me know what you want and and I'll do it, so thanks.
Thank you.
Alright, um, so, the reason I'm running is because I just don't see anything happening. Um, and it starts from my local area and and you see it across town, so I got involved because I wanted to make a change. Even if I don't get elected, the needle's gonna move, right? Because people are aware of some of the things that are brought up, they weren't, you know, no, they weren't being even talked about before. So, the idea that, you know, that things are gonna stay the same, they're not. And, you know, I've always been part of all of the community, now I'm gonna find myself even more involved, whether I win or lose, I'm okay with that, you know, I got things to do too. But the idea, I'm stepping up because I wanted to step up for the people that I, that I deal with on a regular basis, you know, my, my customers, my community members, my family that live, that live in the area. So, um, I think that I've been geared, you know, my whole life has been, you know, community service. My whole life has been, you know, working with different uh, nonprofits, you know, bringing people together, getting things done. That's one of my gifts, you know, so I wanna bring that gift to our community, to move things forward, to get things done. So, you know, if if, you know, I'm seeing all these things now, okay, what do I need to do to do that? What do I need to get that done? You know, I'm starting to make a list, right? Start making the list. I'm about getting things done and not about, you know, looking at stuff and waiting for people to tell me, you know, I'm now I'm in that mode, like, okay, we gotta move this forward. And uh, you know, so that's one of my main things, is, you know, leadership, that's gonna move us in a direction that we wanna go, number one. Number two, support our community, try to figure out new ways to find affordable housing in the area. Don't be, uh, don't fall for the scare tactics of, you know, that's going on with, you know, uh, with the catchphrase of, you know, uh, affordable housing or, you know, the first one, but rent control, you know, cause there's no promises on that. All, everything, again, all we know is, is that it doesn't work, right? And we don't wanna uh, make it worse for the people that need it the most, you know? If you add a tax to, a additional tax, that's like seven hundred dollars per family of four, that's a lot of money for these people that are already struggling, you know? I know families that are three families in a two-bedroom house, you know, or two-bedroom apartment, they're making it work. So if they can, they can make it work, we can make it work for them, at that point, I'd be that person that stands up for them, thank you.
Well, thanks everybody for coming, thank you, Tony, thank you, Oscar, and thank you all of you.